Good morning. Welcome to the August 25th meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Jim will lead us in our prayers and our prayers in our prayer. Jim.
Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for this opportunity to meet here and discuss the business of our county. We especially thank you for those of us who were fortunate enough to get rain this weekend, for the crops and grass and just to maintain the beauty of our county and supply that water that we all need for survival. We also ask you to look over and protect our troops that still serve us overseas, that you may bring them home safely to us. We especially ask you to watch over the families of those who have made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms so that we can meet here today. We ask you to give us guidance today and have our decisions be wise and thoughtful today and protect our county and our first responders also. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Welcome back, Gail. Hope you're feeling a little better.
Thank you.
And with that, you can call the road, sweetheart.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Craig Lynch.
Present.
Chip Pinion.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Gail. Approval of our August 11th meeting minutes. A call on Vice Chair Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We do approve those August 11th minutes.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. No items withdrawn or deferred?
Correct, sir.
Item number 6A submitted for preliminary plan approval. Long Creek subdivision, section five. Item number is 13-1005. Reapproval. Ten lots, nine are buildable, on 6.03 acres, zoned RM located off of Rooker Road. Harding Fox is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property is located along the south side of Rooker Road, part of the Long Creek subdivision. This section was originally approved back in June of last year, but the original approval has lapsed, so the applicant has resubmitted and is bringing it back through for consideration. From a planning standpoint, the comments were pretty straightforward. Nothing really had changed from their original submitter, so we didn't really have any additional comments. I know our engineering staff was working with the applicant on the drainage layout for the subdivision, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Hill to discuss that.
We've been working with SEC on this and looking at the drainage. We've been back and forth and late last week, we, they submitted a, the design you have in front of you, and I think it looks good. There's a few little things. We're still ironing out all the plans, but this is the, this is the major scheme right here. And this one will have infiltration, so this will be, I think our first one actually that we've seen that will have our infiltration requirement. So the first one inch of rain that hits this section will go to that pond and stay there until it goes into the ground. So, so this one, I'm, we've spent a lot of time looking at it. I can just put it that way. We've, just making sure we've got everything, everything working like, like we hope it will. So, but outside of that, everything meets all of our requirements.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Discussion questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 13-1005. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 7A submitted for final plat approval. Sue Fultz, lots two, three, and four. The item number is 14-2050. Three lots on 7.9 acres, zoned RM located off of East Compton Road. Lily and Sue Fultz is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along East Compton Road. The applicant is splitting the property that's existing into three tracks, as you see on the screen and on the plats you have at your tables. This plat really is in good order. The only reason it's coming to you is because it's three lots. Staff cannot administratively approve anything greater than two lots. No waivers are required. The revisions have been made consistent to what staff comments were, and besides that, like I said, it's in good order. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, the sole site isn't marked on lot one.
Lot, that, you're talking up here. This is actually existing. This isn't part of the subdivision. This was existing and this was the, the remaining acreage here.
Questions or comments?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Thank you.
Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you. Item 7B, Richmond's Retreat subdivision, section three, and re-subdivision of lots 50 and 52. The item number is 14-2056. Twelve lots on 21.67 acres, zoned RM with a previously approved conditional use permit located off of Shebbyville Highway. KW Group LLC is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This plat probably looks familiar to the planning commissioners because the preliminary for this was approved at the July 28th meeting just a month ago. Essentially what they're doing is they're adding seven new lots here for the subdivision. What they're also doing is accurately reflecting the areas that are needed for the step lines and also the open space, so there's some land transfers going on there as well. So what they're doing is kind of killing two birds with one stone, so to speak, just taking care of all the issues with one plat. So in addition to these lots, they're also making the land transfers in these areas here. Again, from a planning standpoint, the comments have been addressed. Everything appears to be in good order with this. I don't think there's anything from an engineering standpoint that you needed to talk about, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present.
You okay, Eric?
There's, there's no, I mean, all the infrastructure in place, so this, there's nothing on this plat that, that involves engineering, really.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Let's go back to that little revote.
I'm not, I'm not too sure that was this one.
Just a minute. Just a minute.
Eric, um, at the end of Richmond Boulevard, there was a stub street between one and 55?
Yes, sir.
According to what we did the other night, would that have been a cul-de-sac right there?
As long as that's under 150, it will not have to be.
Under 150?
150 lots?
Under 50 feet.
Feet, feet.
So if, you know, if those lots were 200 feet deep, they'd have to do some type of turnaround. It may not have to be a cul-de-sac. It may be able to be, you know, that hammerhead we talked about where kind of a T, just enough to allow, allow an emergency vehicle, a school bus, a garbage truck to get turned around.
So 151, yes. 150, no.
Yeah. That's going to get most of our lot, you know, most of our standard lots are 150 by 100. That's, that's pretty.
If you look at one and say it's 175, would you automatically require that or does just common sense come into it?
It would, I mean, we, we would have, they would have to ask for a waiver, I guess. I mean, it, you know, it's, it's possible, but it would have to ask for a waiver, and it would depend on, you know, the, like, kind of the layout of everything, you know, like that, what's the one we looked at the other day?
That was Pinnacle Hills.
Pinnacle Hills. You know, if you're, call that one, you know, it had the common area in the back. We made them do that little hammerhead deal. See, that was a pretty long way back in there. So, I mean, you're kind of committed, you know, if it was right off the road and there was 160 feet, you know, we could, you know, at least talk about a waiver to that, but, so I think each situation would be different.
So they could come, and I know Will's comment was that they'd misuse it for parking, people going there parked, or maybe the community basketball court or some, so I don't know. But, but people can come and ask for a waiver from that.
Yeah, that would be, I guess that would be from the, would...
If it's in the subdivision regulations, you can ask, they can ask for a waiver, kind of similar like they do, like a fire hydrant waiver or soils waiver, that would be your, they could ask for a waiver to that. But, yeah, I think there is a little bit of, like you said, some common sense to it. You know, we'll look at each development when it comes in to see how it plays out, but, you know, that, that is kind of the hard fast rule at this point.
I think the, the example I can think of is Thompson, it's back behind Mike's place. I can't think of any of that little subdivision. Thompson Farms back in there. They did a little subdivision, Barrett Subdivision, I think it was called, a couple of months ago, maybe a year ago now, and they came into one of these stub streets and extended it, and it was less than 500, but it was like 425 feet, and the road just went down and just, just a square. I mean, just the road just, and it's curb and gutter, so it just, it just stopped. I think that's...
It's too far.
That's probably the intent, you know, because it would be, you know, we, we even get some complaints about that, you know, school buses, because you go in there and you just have to back out, and it's, you know, 425 feet or so. So I, I think that's, that's really more the intent than, than 160, you know, we could, we'd still have to get a waiver, but...
Doug, this is just kind of a general question. There's some really oddly shaped lots here in that grouping between like 51, 63, 64, 52, all that. 51 looks like it's an existing house.
It is.
What's the reason for that little jet?
I think that was a soils area, if I remember right.
Okay. And then the open space sort of wraps around the two-step system drip fields. Is that open space going to be used for anything, or is that just going to be undisturbed?
Well, I know up in this area here, they're proposing to do, I mean, a little, something a little more formal. The applicant is present. He may want to speak a little more to the rest of the open space in these areas.
I just know that CUD likes for people to stay away from the stub field.
Right.
And so that was kind of my question about what, because you've got open space that's kind of wrapped all around it in a couple of different, about three different sides.
It looks like these will be fenced off. You can kind of look to see they've got these, those little Xs on the line, usually the notes that they're going to fence out the, the step areas, and that's typically what CUD does on those anyway, so hopefully that would keep anybody out that was trying to, to think about using that.
If the applicant's here, would you come forward, please?
Steve Knox.
Steve, would you answer that question about the use of that open space?
Yeah, basically what we're planning on doing in between the two lots areas there and stuff, we're looking to do a playground area to put in there, but then the rest of the spaces and stuff, because CUD does cut back into them, we're just going to leave it open.
That's fine.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Eric, I hate to beat on this question too much, but on these little stubs, stub streets, you know, I understand these are built for the possibility that something's going to be built next door and you want to have access to it, but if these little small streets, say you've got 151 feet and there's no driveways going off of it, and there's no other houses back in there, and it's creating a problem, then why are we even, why should we even require the street to be built now? Why don't you leave a cut in the curb there and maybe, you know, a 10-foot apron or something, and then the next guy, if he develops this property, then he can extend that 150 feet and tie it in and leave it as an open area with the right-of-way already deeded to the county, but the HOA maintains it, or whatever. I just, you know, if this is, I, I, I just don't see the, see the, the reason for putting a big cul-de-sac if nobody's supposed to go down there. So if we're not going to, why even build it at all if it's a problem?
And, to be honest, that's probably a Doug question. I'm not, I, I don't say that we should build them or not, you know, I just, I make sure they get built right, you know, as far as the stub streets, you know, that's really a, you know, a big picture, you know, planning issue, and I see what you're saying about, about that, and, and, you know, if that's, if that's the direction you guys want to take, I mean, that's what we can do, but as far as, you know, we just always put those stubs in because what happens is you get that, you leave that dead space there and it's right-of-way, and I can see lots of issues. We, we always have a hard time with, with right-of-way that doesn't have a public road on it. It's a, it's a big piece of the puzzle missing.
Yeah, you let that house get to be 10 years old, or neighborhood, and those neighbors have filled in their yards all the way across there, and they're saying, my realtor didn't tell me there's a right-of-way here and all, and I would think that'd be a pretty good argument down the road, trying to cut somebody's yard apart, and they planted bushes and everything in it, but...
And we've run into situations, I mean, I'll get phone calls every now and again from folks from older subdivisions that, in these type of situations where the right-of-way was never officially dedicated or anything, who owns the property, and it's always a nightmare trying to figure out who actually owns it, because, you know, the, you call the developer, developer say, well, I dedicated that to the county. Of course, county will say, well, there's no road there. We never accepted it, so it belongs to the developer, so it's a constant back and forth at that point. I understand where you're going with that, and I even see some merit to it, but in the long run, I think, you know, it's kind of like what Will was saying, eventually, after it's been there for 15, 20 years and it's pretty much acting like someone's yard, and all of a sudden someone comes and says, hey, we want to cut a yard or a road through here, you know, that can be problematic, too.
So would something like that have been at the developer's discretion to put that road right there? I mean, could they have just as easily brought you where 152, or 155 didn't have a road, or would you have made that suggestion then because of that?
As I understand, this plat, or this subdivision, the eventual plan is to have this road go all the way down to Walnut Grove Road. Thank you. Right in this area. We've even got some, when they kind of did 52 and even 54, kind of shows the eventual connection there, which I think is why this was put there to begin with.
I'm just saying hypothetically, like Jim is saying, if there, if we didn't know what the future plans were, would you have allowed them to just go straight across there or do the little curb there? Would you have allowed them to do what Jim suggested? Or would you have...
Probably not. We probably would have told them to stub it.
Okay.
I think if you did that, nobody would put them in.
No, I got you. I was just curious.
I think if you allowed it, nobody would put a stub in.
So if I accept the rationale that we need a stub there, and it's 151 feet or 160 feet, and no driveways, no reason for anybody to go under there, to go in there, I mean, 150 feet seems short. I understand the logic if you've got driveways or reasons for fire trucks, garbage trucks, or just people to go in there, but if nobody's going to go onto that little street, I just don't see the reason to put a cul-de-sac down there and encourage people to go onto that little street.
We're back to last month's discussion all over again here.
Right. 150 was in the fire code.
And, and I may be out of line, Mr. Chairman, and cut me off here, but I just feel like we didn't get an opportunity to discuss it well in that environment. I mean, we brought the subject up, but it just kind of whoosh.
And 150, we didn't pick that...
I tried, nobody joined in with me.
We didn't, we didn't pick that number, Jim, and that's not, you know, that was in the fire code. You know, we just, that's straight out of the fire code.
Yeah, I'm like Jim, the more I thought about it after it had already gone through, I just wasn't, I just wasn't perfectly sure in my mind that we did the right thing on that, but like you say, if you can, common sense, you can get a waiver on it. I like the idea that you can get a waiver if they don't have, they don't have to put a cul-de-sac, like if it is 151 feet, then that's, or 160 or whatever.
And there's the ability, again, for waivers, just like, you know, consider waivers for other issues in the subdivision regulations, and at that point, that's when we take it on a case-by-case basis to see, you know, what's the circumstance of the entire subdivision at that point. So there is that ability.
Well, that, that's interesting, because we'll, we'll probably see our first one next month. So, see, see what we do.
That or lots that are 140 feet deep.
And just so I'm clear, we can't grant a waiver ourselves. It has to go to BZI to get that waiver correct.
Well, if it's in the subdivision regulations, which this is, you can, they can request a waiver from here. They don't have to go to BZI.
Could we even in our infinite wisdom up here just say, hey, I don't think that's, right, and could we pass it and, and, and take that out without an application for a waiver?
I don't think so. I think we would have, chances are what would happen is we'd see a subdivision come through and the plat would be on there, and we would say, okay, they are not wanting to do a turnaround here and here because of the fact that there were 150 or whatever, the first of the reasons we're talking about here, and you'd approve the plat subject to the waivers, so there wouldn't be an application per se. You know, it wouldn't be a situation, probably in that situation where somebody would actually make an application prior to submitting the plat. They probably just submitted as part of the plat review, and we just considered it as part of the plat review.
But then, if we approve it subject to the waiver, they've still got to go to the BZA and get the waiver?
No, no, that would be, it'd be just like a fire hydrant or a...
We're approving it subject to our own waiver?
Yes, just like you do it, yeah.
I mean, that just, the wording there kind of throws me off. I mean, we're approving it with the waiver then.
Correct.
Okay, not subject to a waiver, but with a waiver.
Correct, yes.
I just don't see somebody having to spend $300 and burn another month.
Right, no, they don't have, with subdivision regulations, that would stay here, just like a fire hydrant waiver that you would consider an off-site soils waiver or something like that, or like an easement waiver, something like that. It'd be similar to that.
Do we have the authority to do that if it's in the fire code?
Well, that kind of gets back to the discussion we had, you know, you can grant the waiver here, but then Larry Farley would have to get involved, and probably what we would do would be a same situation from a fire hydrant waiver standpoint. We'd get Larry involved on the front end whenever we saw that, and then we'd expect him to be here at the meeting to, to make any comments, or, you know, maybe make some sort of a suggestion as part of the possible compromise perhaps, or something like that. So he would be involved on the front end of that.
Well, he could even submit a letter the same way CUD does, saying just won't support a fire hydrant. He could say, I'm okay with this, I'm not okay with this.
Right. He could do that.
It all boils down to some, people that are sitting in these seats 10 years from now having common sense enough to know when to put a one, when to put the stub in and when not to, and a whole lot of that depends on what you look at. Behind, what's behind there, if there's 100 acres back there, it's probably going to be subdivided, then you put it in. You know, if it looks like it may never be subdivided, then you don't, you don't put the turnaround in.
And there were, there was a subdivision...
Or the stub, maybe.
Um, Pembroke Farms off of Stewart's Creek a month or so ago that we looked at. The original design of the subdivision, they actually showed a couple of stubs, I guess that'd have been to the north of the property, and we told them to take them out because they were stubbing into subdivided land that was along a cul-de-sac, and we're like, well, that road's never going to go through there because those lots are already developed. We just told them to take it off. You know, we do encourage connections for connectivity to adjacent tracks, but it's not mandated in the sense that you have to have one absolutely on every side, you know. If we, we try to do it on a case-by-case basis, as well as, like you said, using a common sense approach in a situation where a road is never going to extend, there's no reason to put one there, we're not going to make them do that, but where, like you said, it makes sense, that's, that's where we would encourage those.
Well, and I guess, I think the responsibility extends beyond the people in these chairs because you've got the engineers who work with this every day, you've got the developers who professionally do this every day. When they put the plan together, they're going to know what the requirements are, and they're going to know probably before we ever see it, if, if they want to put one there. So...
Right.
So I think it's beyond just us. I think it has to do with the plan that they bring us.
And some of that we'll even see in our pre-application meetings. A lot of the times, especially for new startup subdivisions, I mean, the engineers and their developers will come and meet with us, and we'll tell them upfront what we see some of the issues being.
More to come. Other questions? We have a, a motion and a second to approve item number 7B. Any, any other questions?
Is that subject to staff comments?
Yes.
Thank you, Ma'am. Other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 14-2056. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 8A submitted for site plan approval. Saddlewood Farm Venue. The item number is 14-3020. New construction of 9,682 square feet on 23.2 acres, zoned AR Agricultural Residential located at 9522 Franklin Road. Larry Berberich is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property is located along the north side of, I'm sorry, that's a typo when the staff comments there, of Franklin Road. The property was rezoned agricultural residential back in January of this year. The applicant's intent at that time was to, to zone the property, continue using it for horses, horse barn, that kind of thing, and then also to possibly use that structure for future wedding events, social events, those kind of things. Their plans have progressed to the point of requiring site plan approval. You can see on the plan before you, they've building, or actually, the, the structure itself, they originally started building it as an agricultural structure. It's a little over 9,600 square feet, again, it's 23, almost 23 and a half acres of land. The structure is of such size that it does require fire code approval from the state Fire Marshal's Office. They're going to have to do some pretty significant modifications to the building to make it comply with the state Fire Marshal's Office. Some of the concerns we have as staff is the, the parking area here. They're not proposing to pave it, which is not really our concern. Our concern really is more the calculations that were used in determining how many parking spaces are going to be here. We're still a little, little fuzzy on that as far as how that's, that's going to work. We also recommended that the applicant look at the possibility of maybe doing some improvements here along the entrance to the property. Right now, this is really just a driveway that goes through here. Now, they are showing how it's going to circulate when it gets backed here. These events are probably going to be pretty much on the weekends, not an everyday type of occurrence. You know, if people are coming in one way and going out one way, that's not so much an issue, but this is not a very wide drive right through here. So, again, those are some of the concerns that we had, especially when it comes to the, the entrance up through here. But the applicant is present. They'll be, we'll all be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time, but beyond that, those are the concerns that, that we've got as staff on this.
What do you, what's the staff's suggestion as, as to address those concerns?
Well, as far as the, if they feel, and basically what we told them is, you know, whatever it is you're proposing, you'll need to defend at the planning commission. If they feel that this is going to be adequate for the traffic coming in and out, what we would recommend is just maybe something up the front here so somebody could come in and leave at the same time. Now, generally speaking, more people are probably, the people probably coming and going generally at the same time. Generally with these type of events, people start showing up, you know, half hour, 45 minutes beforehand, and then through the beginning of the event. It's really when everybody's leaving at the same time, it becomes more of a, of an issue. Now, I'm not so much concerned with people, you know, the backup of people leaving, it's really going to be on this driveway. It's not going to cause any real traffic problems here. I'm not really advocating turn lanes or anything like that here, but it would be kind of nice to see the ability to have someone come in, someone coming out at the same time right here at the entrance. That's at least our suggestion, but, you know, the applicant is present, can, can speak to that.
So you don't think it's wide enough for a two-way lane right now?
12 feet.
No.
I apologize, I'd step out for a minute, but it says here they're building an agricultural
building, then use it for, in the future, and it's zoned AR, they could just build the building right now.
Well, the building's up.
Oh, the building's up.
They built the building as an agricultural structure. What's happened is the events that they're wanting to do in there...
So it's time to start the events now?
Correct, correct. And they're having to do a change of occupancy to the building because it's not just going to be an agricultural building now. That's really what triggered this. I mean, it's not a situation where they have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the use or anything. The use is permitted by right. But, uh, the fact that they're having to change the occupancy of the building, it was built under an agricultural exemption, but now they're to the point where they want to start ha- having events and, uh, fire code issues and things like that that they're having to deal with.
What feedback did they give you, Doug? When you made, when you made that suggestion?
The applicant's design engineer and I kind of traded emails back and forth, and basically it was just, okay. You know, I, I said, you know, "You're going to have to defend whatever it is you do," and then I received this. So that was, that was about it.
What is the minimum road width for two cars to meet?
Well, I mean, you'd love to see 10-foot lanes. Two 10-foot lanes would be one of the parts that a lot of our roads are that width, but you could, you could get away with, you know, 18 feet on something like this.
Like I said, for the majority of the time when they're using, I mean, the applicants, you know, the owners of the property, they live at the house. So, I mean, this is just a driveway, really. So I don't see the need to make it, you know, like a, a two-lane road or anything like that because predominantly it's going to be used as their driveway, which is fine. Uh, our real concern, again, was really more right here at the entrance. You know, I hate to see somebody trying to leave and happen at the same time as someone's chair trying to get in and not be able to do that because there's somebody there at the entrance. That was, that was the staff's biggest concern. Not maybe not so much back through here, but more along the, at the intersection there.
Could they widen the entrance a little bit and maybe put a, what I would call a swell or a bubble at a couple of places down the driveway, because cars are meeting if they wanted to pull off? That would, that way they wouldn't have to go in and do major excavation work. They could just add some gravel or, or whatever they've got there in two or three places.
Yeah, I, I don't think that'd work fine.
What Will is suggesting, I know where there's an example of this, probably the same length, and there's a couple of places where they can pull off, works, works really nice.
With a little wider entrance where they wouldn't be stacked on Franka Highway.
Couple of places to pull off, maybe one, one up closer to the house and one halfway or something.
Good morning. Chairman Phillips, member of the planning commission. I'm Bill Huddleston, president of Huddleston Steel Engineering. Uh, yeah, I think that's very reasonable to widen that a little bit. Make sure it's wide enough at the entrance to have two vehicles be able to pass each other. So we'll, we'll make sure of that. As far as the parking goes, Mr. Berberich's here. Uh, we've shown enough gravelled area for 100 spaces. We think that's adequate for most of the events, 90, 95% of the events. There might be a time or two where there is more needed, but there's plenty of area on site to park additional cars if necessary. Uh, again, Mr. Berberich's here, if you, you'd like to hear from him, but...
What do you think about the bubbles?
Uh, we can do a bubble or two, uh, up on the driveway.
The fence to fence is 23 feet 9 inches. And, you know, we had a cement truck coming in this morning, and I, as I was coming to this meeting, there's no problem to pull off, you know, to, to pull and get by there.
What he's saying is add another little wide part, maybe in the middle or something?
Well, there's a fence, like I say, there's a fence there on either side. The, the gravel itself is about 13 feet wide currently. And, and we have a fence on either side of this road right now. And so there's, you know, we've continuously run with people coming in and out of there. At the entrance, we're 32 feet wide at the entrance right now, and there was a cement truck this morning coming in as I was coming out. And I don't think it's really shown here as 32 feet, Bill.
Right. We'll make sure that that's wide in here. What about widening one other place just in case?
Well, we have, you know, we have the gravel there, and people can just pull off to the edge of the gravel and come through. There's about four different areas there that, that happens continuously, you know, when people do come in and out. So I really don't see the need for doing that.
We might ask you to add a little gravel in those spots they're pulling off the, because if they're pulling over in the grass and it comes a two-inch rain, you've got 100 cars back there, you're going to have a muddy mess, you know? We're just thinking, a couple of gravel areas they could pull off a little bit.
There's a heavily gravel area, four inches deep there, and between the fences, there's gravel also. But it's not four inches deep at that.
You may already have what we're talking about, but...
It's shown on the, because we're going by what's, we see on the plan here. So if it's shown on the site plan...
We'll check it, add it if, if it's not there already. But it makes sense what you're saying.
And then Doug, what was your calculation on the parking?
Well, if you, a lot of it would depend on the event itself, of the venue. It's based on, I think it's 40% of the, um, capacity of the building, which would be more than what this is. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. But our zoning ordinance does allow for the ability to provide, uh, like a parking study, if you will. Because sometimes what we've got in the zoning ordinance is more of a, kind of a one-size-fits-all approach, which isn't always, uh, the best approach in situations like this when it, something doesn't quite fit exactly in what the regulations are. I mean, if they're okay, if they think this is going to be enough with that, I would be willing to, to go with that. Uh, if it becomes an issue, we start seeing mud track all over the road for some reason or something like that, they may have to go back and, and add some area. But if they feel that that's what they need, then, you know, I'm not going to, I won't push it at this point.
How many spaces, Doug, on the parking?
I think he said about 100. I think I got that right.
Yeah, mine's print's not real good right here.
And has the, has the fire marshal, uh...
107.
Fire marshal determined the occupancy of the building yet?
Yeah, he's been working pretty extensively with the fire, state fire marshal and our local fire chief and fire marshal.
Has he given us a number on what the occupancy?
Do you guys have a number?
About 400 or something, but you know how they do it. I mean, they got, you'd have to be standing shoulder to shoulder, but it's a, it's a big, no, it's like 400, I think. We've been in touch with the local fire marshal and the state fire marshal. Uh, Mike, Mike Pickle Simon's the architect, and he's, he's had to do a lot of, a lot of justification to them to satisfy both those departments.
So in a motion, would we need to reference fire, fire marshals?
Subject to staff comments is fine. I mean, regardless of, even if you didn't do that, they're going to, it's a separate regulation anyway. They'd have to abide by whatever the fire marshal said regardless. Subject to staff comments, I think, would cover it.
Eric, you're okay with the volume of stormwater and all that stuff in there? Is that existing or would that be new?
That'll be new.
Okay. And we're okay with one way in, one way out?
Well, I, from what I understood, them saying they were going to, that this was wider than what, uh, it was indicated, that there was the ability to way, one way in and then another way out, you know, two-way traffic at that point.
All right. Uh, that being said, based on staff comments and obviously fire marshal's approval, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
And a second. Thank you. Other discussion?
So how will we know that the road's widened up?
I'm going to revise the plan and get it taken.
Okay, so, so that's the part of the subject staff comments, if you're not satisfied with the width of that road, then we'll revisit it.
We'll work with them on that, yes ma'am.
Other questions? All is in favor of the motion to approve item number 14-3020. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine is, uh, staff reports or other business, Doug?
I believe Mr. Hill has, uh, some, uh, stuff he wants to talk about.
I just wanted to kind of go through, we talked last month about this, uh, engineering database. Uh, I just kind of want to talk through it quickly. It's, it's pretty self-explanatory, but just in case. It's the, uh, spreadsheet you have in front of you, and, and just as an example, we use that top one, that Barrett subdivision. Of course, the lot range, of course, as you can see, if you look down a couple, uh, a couple rows below, like Cascade Falls, see there's three sections, and so that's how we keep up with which lot numbers we're actually dealing with. And then the next column, we have our file number. Uh, the next column, we have our preliminary approval. That's actually the date that we'll normally sort it by, so that way they'll be in order. And so you'll be able to look the top of the list, and the one we approved today would be at the top of the list. So, uh, that way we kind of keep up with the age of things. The developer's name, contractor's name, pre-construction meeting. So you can look under that pre-construction meeting column, and you can see, uh, like, uh, some of the older ones, like Cascade Falls. Uh, actually, let's go down to, um, like Crescent Cove. That one, um, didn't have a pre-construction meeting, or we don't know when it is. So that's, that's still part of this too, because there's, we still have a lot of subdivisions that are, that have been on the books for a long time. And so we may not know all the dates to this. Everything that's, that we have a record of, um, it's like, for example, pre-construction meetings, that's not something we, um, kept really good records of five years ago because we weren't required to do those. Now we're required by the state to do that, so we have to keep better records. So, um, so you can kind of get an idea on our record-keeping on this too, because everything we have a record of, we've got a date on.
Who has to attend the pre-construction meeting? The contractor, the developer, and the engineer?
And the engineer, yes.
All three or...
Yeah. I started that last year, because we, we would sit in those pre-construction meetings, and we'd say, "Well, I'm pretty sure the engineer was, his intent was to do this." And then there, there was no need to guessing on it. And so we just, we just thought it was best to require the engineer to be there, and that way we can, we can talk. We say, "What, you know, what, what are you trying to do here?" And so, and it's really worked out good. Yeah. And then as you get over, um, to subgrade proof roll, uh, the ones with the X are ones we don't know the date. We just know that it's, it's taking place. Then you see, like, uh, Buchanan Estates, section six, face two, the second one there, uh, we have a date. So we know that, I can look at that and say, "Okay, the, the subgrade was proof rolled on that date." Um, and then you can look, let me see, let me find a good example. All of these are, are mostly done. If there was an X under the subgrade proof roll, and there was not one under the base stone proof roll, then we would know that it's in subgrade, and they're working on the base stone. Same thing for base stone. If, if we had X, dates or Xs there, and the binder wasn't marked, I would know that the binder's not placed. So, so this has been a really good tool for us in-house to be able to look on ones that, um, uh, aren't as active as others. You know, we, we've got a half a dozen that we go to, you know, a couple times a week. But there's some that are in those same stages that are just, you know, for whatever reason, they're slower. And so this is a good way for us, somebody calls and we'll still have the status. I, at my desk, I can tell this without sending somebody out. Um, on the next page, it's a continuation. It's, uh, of course, that first column is, uh, top coat laid by date, and we don't have anything in that column because, uh, we don't have anything currently that meets that standard. That's our new standard, where we require the asphalt topping to be placed one year after the binder's placed. And so, uh, the next time we get one that falls under that regulation, we'll put that date there. This next part is the really important part. That's our bond information. So that's where, on this list, we can keep up with what type of bonds we have. Um, as you can see, we have some that are auto-renewing. We have some that are just regular letter of credits. And we have, um, a couple auto-renewing bonds in there. And then you see the surety amount, and then the reduction amount. Um, we have, as a bond comes in, we set the bond of what would it cost to build the infrastructure out from, from scratch. And then let's say they've put in half the road. We go in and reduce their bond amount by a percentage that relates to that. And so that's how we keep up, uh, with kind of our reduction amounts. Um, and then the next column, of course, is the final plat recording. And then the next is the CUD release, which is important to us because that's one of the things that we, we will not release lots to be built on if we know that CUD hasn't got the step system in, operating and working in the water. And so we get an official letter from CUD saying that, that, you know, lots one through 12 have, are okay for, for water and CUD. And so we put that, um, in that column there. Uh, and then the next one is the actual release of lots. And then you get to the topping. And if you'll notice, we've tried to follow this kind of sequentially of the way, the way this thing works, you know? Typically, they'll go into binder, then they come get a final plat from you guys, recorded. Then they get their CUD letter, and then we release lots. And that's before the topping. And so, and so as we're going left or right, it kind of falls in order. Um, as you can see, we've got, uh, one road on here that has topping, um, and not many do. So, and that's, that's normal, and that's okay. The next column is our building permits pulled, and so you can kind of look at that and gauge, um, you know, okay, we've got six lots pulled out of 19 total building lots. So we're, you know, we're about a third of the way. Next column is the warranty period. That falls under our new regulations when, when we, um, when a developer tops a road, and that road's sitting out there, just like the county's going to accept it, and we make them sit for a year and watch it, make sure it's under warranty. That's how we keep up with those dates. Uh, and then that last column is my favorite, and that is the road board acceptance slash bond release date. And so, uh, when, when that date's on there, that means that everything's good, and it's in Greg Brooks's hands, and, uh, the bond's going away. So, uh, and then outside of that, of course, our comments is just kind of how we keep up with, um, you know, just little random things. And when I like, uh, like there's one that says needs, needs repairs on roads, you know, uh, a failed proof roll here, little things like that. We learned the hard way that, um, we had a lot of turnover the last couple of years. And we learned the hard way that if you don't put this stuff on paper, you know, on these type projects, it's really hard to keep up with stuff. And so we've really tried to do a better job of, of documenting as much as possible so that, because unfortunately, you know, you get an incident like we had in '08 where everything slows down, and here we are picking up projects that were pretty hot back in 2006. That's a long time ago. And a lot of the faces have changed up here. And so trying to know when things happen and what happened has been tough. So this is our biggest step toward making that process better, and so far it's working good. Um, it's a, it's a little tedious and keeping up with everything. There's a lot of dates and a lot of Xs and... But, uh, but it's, so far it's working out good. So I just wanted you guys to kind of have an idea of, of how thorough this thing is. We've, it's, it's taken us a while to put it together. It's, uh, there's a lot of information on there, and a lot of, uh, Ms. Phillips is wonderful. She has spent a lot of time in the file room looking and digging to, to put a lot of these older, older pieces in the puzzle. So, but that's all I had. I just kind of wanted to talk through that with you guys on a, on a day when we weren't here till 11:30.
And that first, that first comment that you noted that said needs repairs on road? Like, what's, what's the plan of action there? I mean, it's, it's already got its topping, but it hasn't been released to the, to the road board. So that's still something that you oversee to make sure those repairs are done before it goes to Greg, or?
Yeah, that, that would be a, a situation where it's in binder, there's houses out there. Um, but it's, we've still got a bond, but it hadn't been topped yet. But there's, you know, kind of like, um, Muirwood we talked about last month. You know, the, the road's in binder, you know, but there's some repairs that need to be done. So...
Like a tickler file that your people keep to go back and check, or?
Yeah. So our, um, our chief inspector is, he keeps talking like he wants to retire in a couple of years. Oh, he's talking crazy. I don't know what he's talking about, but if that happens, that, that's where we're going to have to rely on this thing, because that's what's so hard. I mean, it's, because he's just out all the time looking at things. And so, and he, it's really hard to document. Hmm, it looks like a little crack there. I mean, he would, he, that's all he'd do is ride all day. And so, um, so that's, that's our attempt to start preparing for that, for that moment.
Looks nice.
Looks good.
Anything else?
Just a quick reminder about the planning commissioner training at the TAPA conference this week. I have heard from, I heard, I've heard from some of you. A couple of you are able to go. I know at least one that's not able to go. If you could let me know if you intend to go by the end of today, uh, then I can go ahead and put the order in tomorrow. Uh, I mean, you can even show up day of probably and still do it, but it is $50, but that would save us. If we do it ahead of time, it'd save you from having any out-of-pocket costs and having to be reimbursed. But, uh, it's going to be Thursday, 1:30. It's about 5:00, 4:35 or so at the Music City Center downtown Nashville. Uh, should be a pretty good session. I'm looking forward to it. But, uh, if you just let me know, those of you who already have, and if you let me know by the end of the day, then I'll, I'll go ahead and sign up those that I've heard from. But, uh, besides that, I didn't have anything further.
Quick question for Eric. Is this something that you'll give us an updated one every month? Or do we even need to be, we don't even need to be involved in that part due unless you have an issue?
I was going to do quarterly, if that's okay with you. I mean, I can do it every month if you want it, but just kind of...
I'm not sure what it would do any good if we...
Yeah, and, and we can put it on the, uh, on the SharePoint, kind of like the agendas, you know, I, I can do that. And, and if you guys ever have any questions or about the status of any of these, you feel free to call, and we'll, I'll tell you anything, or you can have access to this, whatever's best for you guys. So I, I didn't, I mean, I, I hate to print it every month, you know, if you guys are just going to, you know, whatever. It's not really enthralling.
Yeah. Let me ask you a question, Eric, and, and, and let me, first of all, let me ask if you're at liberty to discuss this. That's the, let me open with that. You know, you talked about, we had, the, the debt got reshuffled several years ago when the economy boomed. You had several projects that were just stopped, on hold, abandoned. New banks came in, new developers came in. I know we had an issue with one of these particular incidents where we couldn't collect money to finish the pavement. Muirwood is the one that comes into mind. That got settled, correct? Or, or we, did we work some?
No, we are, we are in litigation.
You're still, we're still in litigation?
We're in litigation.
Okay. I was under the impression that some, something had been done?
No.
Deal wise, okay.
We, um, we are in litigation with that bonding company to, um, we, we called their bond, and they said, to tell the story correctly, they had, we had two bonds with this same developer that we called, the same bonding company, and they paid one, and the other one, they said, "No thanks." And so we have been in litigation since around 2012, uh, to get those funds. We're still working through that. They are really good at dragging their feet. It's just been a slow process, and, and the road has been deteriorating since. I got approval from the county commission last month to receive funds to go in and pave that road and top that road now so that we can try to minimize the damages of another winter that would do to this road. And, uh, the bond amount out there is about 226,000. And we just, we want to try our best to keep all of our, all the cost of this project under that 226,000 because, you know, I'm from, I'm not a lawyer, but I, I don't, I can't imagine that in the lawsuit we could get more than that bond amount. So we want to try to keep it under that. And so, so that's where we're at on that. And so we're, and we're hope, so we're going to do those, that project and hope to be reimbursed for that, is the intent.
Okay.
Was there any significant difference or any difference between the two projects? I'm curious as to why they paid one and why they did not pay, pay the other one.
About 150,000.
You think that's a major, that's a major significant difference?
I think so. That and...
Circumstances were still, were about the same, then?
Pretty close. The only difference, without, not getting too far into the lawsuit, there was, um, um, the way the lots were transferred. If you remember, that was kind of the big stink over all that stuff was when those guys were going bankrupt, you know, some of the banks were, were selling off the lots and just leaving the roads. So they would go into this, this big development and just kind of leave the roads and just act like that wasn't there, and just sell off all the lots. And in the Muirwood case, one person... that wasn't there and just sell off all the lots. And in the Muirwood case, one person or one company bought a lot of those lots. And so, I think this lawsuit, I think they're trying to go after that, that company to try to get some money from them. That's, that's the only difference, other than the, than the amount.
And so, what we've learned, we've got measures in place. Part of it was the no longer accepting bonds, right?
Right.
So, we're better prepared for the next time that happens. Is that a fair statement?
No bonds, only letter of credit. Letter of credit has to be auto-renewing. We, we won't accept it if it doesn't have, if it doesn't have a clause in there that basically says that, that the bank, they can't, they can't close that letter of credit out without giving us sixty days' notice. We actually started with ninety days, you know, that was one of the tweaks we made in our language. And we found that realistically sixty was, that aligned pretty well with the bank process. And so, it's worked out really well. So, so there's no, none of this, you know, frantically, you know, running around worried about stuff. So, that's been a big change. And also, on our new stuff, we're requiring a performance agreement, which is basically just a contract that we get everybody to sign. And so, if, in the case that a bank says, no, we're not gonna pay, I mean, it would, our, the attorneys say that it would be a pretty, I mean, just a blatant contract, basically saying that, basically spelling out what a letter of credit does. And we watch them really close. We watch them really close.
I have another question along the line of roads. When we had the folks from Williamson County come and they talked to us about the traffic sheds and all that, I was very intrigued by the idea that you could go ahead and determine what a maximum capacity for a road would be. Because, you know, that was always the struggle that we've had in terms of asking for improvements, was they could only improve, only had to improve the part that was right in front of them. And then what happens if, you know, builder number one comes in and spends all this money, and then builder number two benefits, and that seemed, you know, inequitable. Are we gonna pursue that? Are we gonna talk about that anymore? Because that, that really fascinated me, that, that we could have that approach.
Yeah. I will say, I mean, that's something staff would like to pursue. Now, something like that, I mean, obviously, we can't do it at a staff level. The gentleman that spoke, not the Williamson County Planning Director, but the other gentleman that was here, Steve Talknell, is a consultant. And, and he's the one that did Williamson Counties. And we would have to, you know, kind of do something similar like we did when we did the zoning update and the comprehensive plan, you know, put it out there for, I don't think it'd be, the cost, I don't think would be anywhere near what we paid for the comprehensive plan. If that's something you'd like to move forward with, I think that's something we can start exploring. We, we don't have anything budgeted in the, in the, in our budget this year, but maybe going forward, I mean, that's something we, we take a look at. I like the idea. I think it's got some good practical application, especially in the far-reaching areas of the county. I do think that there are some, we have to be careful at the same time, you know, we don't want to, I mean, there were a lot of questions that y'all had that, that I had, quite frankly, on the front end. So, we need to be careful of, of those situations where we don't get into something of unintended consequences, so to speak. But, if that's something you'd like to move forward with, I mean, if you just kind of give us the, the go-ahead, for lack of a better term, I can start talking to Mayor Burgess about that and we can see how we want to maybe pursue going forward with this.
First, I'd just be interested to know what a ballpark price would be to get it down.
Yeah, I think an estimate of cost there would be good for us.
And I think I can, I can probably just email, I mean, obviously, we'd have to put it out, like I said, bid and all that. But, I'm sure that the consultant would be happy to give us just kind of a ballpark figure as what they did with Williamson County. And I'm sure he's done others in different areas, you know, has an idea about what that would cost. So I can, I can certainly get that, provide that to you.
If I could, one more thing. I want to clarify something. When we did our subregs update last month, I, I had a comment from someone that was watching at home. And, and I want to clarify something on the, the new procedure we're doing with critical lots. You know, if you recall, we talked about doing plot plans, is basically what we call them, on, on critical lots, on lots that are extremely steep, where, you know, it's, it's really too hard, we're really guessing at the phase. When we're sitting in here, we're looking at these preliminary plats, we're really, even the construction yards, we're, we're almost guessing, because shores, you build it one way, you know, the homeowner will come in and say, you know, I really want the driveway to be on this side of the house, so you need to change it. There, I think there was a little confusion. Some people were thinking that we were gonna require that on all lots. And that's not the case. That's not it. We, we would not require a plot plan. And some, some communities do that. They require an actual plot plan for each lot, which means you'd have to hire a surveyor engineer for every lot. That's, that's not the intent of, of what we were wanting to do there. We, we just wanted to cover ourselves a little bit better on these really steep, critical lots. And so, it's just a handful. We, we've just seen a few of those that would even meet that criteria in, in many years. But I just want to clarify to you guys that, that, that was the intent of all that. It's just for, just for those special lots, not for all lots.
Will staff make the, the determination as to when that kicks in?
I will. I, I think the verbiage had the, at the end of it, we put it at the discretion of the county engineer. And the engineers, anytime, because we've kind of done it a time or two, and just kind of starred the lot and just put the, the little bit of extra precaution need to be taken place. And the engineers, I mean, it's always somewhere that, that they understand completely. And everybody wants to make sure that we do the right thing. And so, we just always get concerned that you get five of those lots on the side of a hill, and the top two do one thing, and the bottom two do another thing, and then you got the lot in the middle that gets left out to dry. So we're just trying to, trying to help on some of those. We don't have that many steep areas in this county, but, but every now and again, they pop up.
And in the regs, you defined what a critical lot was. So that would, they would know what would trigger that.
We put a great, and we put, we left it loose enough that it's something that we could work with the engineer. We don't, you know, it's, it, it's usually something that the engineer brings up. You know, they're like, mm, these lots here are pretty steep. So...
Those critical lots are, are not just lots that are on a steep slope. I remember, Doug, and I think it was before your time, that someplace off of Franklin Road, during a drought condition, five years or so, there was a beautiful piece of property that was developed. And then, normal time came and everything was underwater. And they had to start putting in all of these drain type of things in there after the fact. Could, could those lots be critical lots?
I think that, that phrase in the regs that says at the discretion of the county engineer, I think if we, if we knew something, I think we could, we could do that. But, you know, we don't. I'm, I'm really conservative about that stuff. I don't, I don't, you know, we, we don't want to put more on anybody than we have to. We just, but if, but if it's something we feel like that the, the lot owner would need to be protected, and the builder, you know, a lot of times too, because on these real steep, you know, it don't take a whole lot of elevation change. But when you, you know, you look at the side of a hill, but when you start thinking about a hundred-foot lots, tracking it down, I mean, we've, we've seen some recently. And it's just, even just these little sections, we do these smaller lots, especially when we get down below fifteen thousand square feet, you can get pretty steep. I mean, it's, it's there, so...
It's, it's, it's absolutely critical, I think, for property owners to have that at home. And so, it's not just, it's not just a good thing to do. It's really important for people, especially they're building homes and things like that. It's really, really important.
We, we would not abuse that. We, we wouldn't do that in, anytime we didn't feel like it was just absolutely critical.
I would think as time went on, you're gonna find more and more of those lots, because the easy places have been built out. And now, people are going back and looking again and think, well, I wasn't gonna deal with that hill, but I, there's nothing else, so I'll do that. So, as time goes on, you'll get more of that.
A step system, really, that's, that's kind of the nature of a step system. You know, it's, and I always go back to Stonewood subdivision, not a subdivision that's almost built out now. They put their step system down in the, in the low-line area, in the pasture. And they just went up that rocky hill and built a subdivision. And so, you know, twenty years ago, no way, you know, there'd have been no way to develop that. So we're, we're getting into those areas now. It worked out nice, it did.
Some of the lots, actually, if everything is in place to build on it, actually, it makes real attractive neighborhoods. But it does need to be engineered correctly. And it's, it's, it's good to be ahead of that curve, it really is. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Our next scheduled meeting is September, Monday, September the eighth. We have no rezonings. We have no public hearings scheduled. And unless someone's object, I'm gonna cancel that meeting. And I see some nods.
Cancel.
Anybody have anything they need to bring up, any training we need to do? If, if so, we can continue that meeting. But if not, we'll just cancel that meeting, which will make our next meeting then. It looks like Monday, September the twenty-second, nine a.m. right here.
Yes, sir.
For any of those people out there that are Farm Bureau members, they can attend the Farm Bureau annual meeting that night of the eighth. And I was gonna have to miss that, but now I'll be free to go to the Ag Center.
Yeah, they always follow on the same night, every year. So that affects several of us in here.
Doug probably did that on purpose.
I know.
If Doug's mother-in-law was, he might just ask.
It's odd, isn't it?
Anything else to come before the commission? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.